Happy New Year to everybody and welcome to the Mashpee School Committee Meeting of January 2nd, 2019. And the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we will not have Don for tonight and hopefully Jeff will be here. All right. Next on the agenda, we have the public hearing for the FY 2020 budget, so we are going to open that. I don't see anybody currently in the audience for that. Needless to say, we'll continue on with it and if anybody has any comments or anything they want to talk about regarding the 2020 budget, we can go ahead and do that now.
Can I just tell you that what you have in this packet is the summary of the FY, of my proposed FY 20 budget that appeared in the newspaper. Then you have a revised narrative that goes with the final budget that I proposed after we had made some adjustments. After the narrative, you have a summary sheet that you've seen before where we adjusted in the personnel budget and we also adjusted some things out of the operating budget to come down to a final revised 22,726,919 with my suggestion of using $355,000 from school choice, bringing it down to 22,371,919 requested to be funded from the town. And then what you have in the last part is the detail that goes with that budget. And all of these documents are posted online under the school committee's page of our webpage under Finance.
Remember, I believe it is next meeting we'll be voting on the budget?
Yes.
So next meeting we'll be voting on the budget, school committee budget, with the numbers that we will be looking for, whether we want to align and match with the superintendent's budget or obviously we can go ahead and...
Hello? Pardon my turn?
And I think when we get to the Finance Working Group report out, there's a sheet that goes with that.
Oh, so we're going to talk about this?
It's the January meeting, the next meeting. The January 16th meeting.
16th is correct.
So currently in the budget, public hearing for the budget. So anything you want to add or talk about or say anything about the budget, we don't really have any public hearing. We'll use the time because we got to honor the time, so we've got around another 12 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, since there's no public here at the moment, do you want to go to the next and then just keep this open?
Um...
In case someone shows up.
Yeah, we do that. I want to give Jeff a chance to, if you have any, anything you want to talk about the budget right this second.
No, no, I think I agree with Patty that we can talk about her recommended budget because we did have a Finance Working Group meeting right after the new info came out.
You mean the response from Rodney?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That's all I wanted to talk about, so I'll wait.
I don't think we can keep public comment, I mean, we can't keep...
Public hearing?
Public hearing. Open and then go to regular business now.
Yeah, all right. We can do that. We'll just leave it. We've got about another nine, eight or nine minutes anyway, so maybe there'll be some public that will show up.
We do want to take the nine minutes and talk about the do out?
About what? As long as it's 2020 budget related, absolutely.
Yeah. Can we do that?
Want to just do that and if somebody has a question, we can do it?
Yeah.
Patty? I think you might have missed that.
I was chatting, I'm sorry. She was...
I was.
Though we were just saying, we just might as well take advantage of the nine minutes and talk about the working group, I guess.
Yeah. It's a good idea. So you have an addition sheet at your table that reflects what the town manager sent to us in an email. So at the bottom, the town manager made a suggestion that we apply our current preschool revolving account fund balance of $75,000 to our FY 20 budget and he is also making a recommendation of using $600,000 in school choice funds to offset the FY 20 budget. If we were doing those two things, you'll see the new number there and that represents a 3.1% increase over the appropriation from FY 19. And I know Mr. Funk is perfectly capable of contributing anything, thoughts about the revolving account or any of the $600,000, what we talked about in the...
The $75,000, the preschool account, we were projected on using it this year. That's the only comment that I would make. And the reason why we haven't got into it yet is we were kind of using that same theory that we would see how things are going along throughout the year and then kind of back into it if we needed it. If we didn't need it, then we can bring it forward into FY 20. But that was, right now, it looks like we were going to, we're going to have to use it. What's driving it is the double salaries that we have on people that are long-term subs.
Mr. Funk, can you remind me what we used, allocated from school choice last year or this current year?
This current year, 355. 355, so...
Projected, yeah.
I didn't bring those, no.
Well, there's something in this handout about what we used the previous years.
It's in the narrative.
Yeah, it's also on the first page of this detailed proposed FY 20 budget.
Right.
It says FY 2018 expended was $500,000?
We used a total of $500,000 last year to balance out our budget. That is correct. That's what I put in the bottom. And I'm, on the FY 19, 355,411. That's what we were going to use out of...
I guess my, our biggest comment on this particular correspondence would be that the concern that I had last year when we started, you know, offsetting with school choice and things like that was that it was going to keep increasing. Every year, we were going to be asked to contribute more out of different accounts and out of school choice and obviously that seems to be the case by a significant amount.
So if you, it's a perfect segue into what we talked about then in the working group. So we thought that the best way, the best way, the best way to talk about this is to definitely have a really, I guess, frank discussion on what our floor is going to be. Because it's clearly, we need to set a floor and we need to be able to justify that floor. And we went back and forth a couple of times and we just set it on a round number, which I know we can figure out things that we thought that we should increase the floor to $250,000. That never changes. And then, and the reason we thought that was important is because, just because we have $600,000 available now, this year, doesn't mean that next year we'll have $600,000 available. It could be $450,000. So the understanding has to be that this needs to be adjudicated every single budget cycle. It can't be, we did $600,000 last year, so the expectation would do $600,000 this year. And, you know, to kind of throw out there too, the, you know, what our discussion was before, we had our initial floor of 100 and, I think we went back and forth between 145,000 and 175,000, you know, and that the, you know, we, we kind of have a double edged sword here in the fact that we set ourselves up for success by the fact that we utilize unused seats for school choice, so we don't automatically incur extra expenses. But, you know, there is that chance, because of the way that we do that, that there could be a rolling influx of students at some point that we're unable to plan for, that would cause us to hire a teacher or hire a couple paras, increase our substitute line, a lot of little things that that could affect. And overall, that's where that money needs to be, why that's dictated as a floor, you know, that's where that money would go. And it also provides us a little bit of flexibility with the fact that what we've talked about before is we have such a long-winded budget timeline that it's almost impossible for us to adequately budget for any kind of flexibility and this also would provide some of that. The other thing on top of that was some discussion, very brief discussion about money that is sitting there in the school choice fund, we should maybe talk about allocating that or encumbering that specifically for items that we put towards CIP that aren't funded. So for example, you know, this one is a comment here, if the following requests are funded, then remove them from the operating budget and there's, you know, like 130, I'm sorry, 111,000, 105,000, whatever that is, for the Chromebooks, Interactive Board Systems and Teacher PCs. You know, that could be something where, okay, that's fine, we didn't get the $105,000 in CIP, we should say now we're encumbering $105,000 into our school choice budget. That's encumbered, so at the end of the year, we're going through the new budget cycle, it's not 600,000, it's 495, or 405,000 or whatever. And then, trying to, I hope I don't forget anything. Then the other, that we discussed also, we're kind of, we were kind of discussing about ways that we realize that it's well within the right of the town to ask for this money, right, to offset the operating budget and they keep throwing that at us and we get it. We just want, I just want to be very transparent about the pitfalls of doing it. In that if we are required to change the way that we do our budget cycle, then the town has to make a couple of changes too. And one of them that was brought up was the maintenance of the schools. And that if we're going to take all of our flexibility away from our budget, that when we turn around and have to drop an electrical line down for a new library desk, the town's got to pay for that out of their maintenance budget, not the schools have to find that in their budget. We're always required to find things out of the budget, but that, you know, the DPW sides can always say we didn't budget for that. So, in a kind of a quick synopsis, that's what we talked about. Anything else, George?
No, that's about it.
Yeah. So ultimately, I mean, I don't think anybody found it...
There was one of them.
Yeah, go for it. No.
One other thing, when we went through the numbers there, I think it was 97,000...
That was what was left.
Was left of the 250,000 that we wanted to count as a floor. So we have 97,000.
Oh, right, right now.
Right.
Yeah.
Of the, and we wish to, do we wish to keep 250,000? I think that's a vote for next week.
And this doesn't change our methodology where we, we use school choice in arrears.
That is correct.
So we're still, we're still have some kind of fiscal flexibility that way and responsibility, I think, actually.
I think we talked about too, that we were grateful for the 402,000 that we've received from CIP, but there is a distinction between what really is a DPW item versus what's ours. We talked about if we were to leave our school, what would we take with us and what would stay behind. We've asked for these things because we might not necessarily have DPW asking for them, but they truly are, you know, we're grateful for them, but, but they are DPW items, not necessarily school items.
Right.
It's kind of like, this paradigm's shifting on this side, it needs to shift on the other side as well, you know, for budgeting.
Sounds good to me.
Just basic, I'll just run through a couple of basic things that, 600,000, we're only generating, I want you to know, we don't have $600,000 worth of choice coming in this year, we have approximately 500,000. The 600,000 is the difference between, the extra 100,000 is the difference between the 355 and the 500,000 that we did last year and I think we had a few, about 94,000 left over.
90 something.
Yeah.
So that would, if I understand what you're saying, that would, in a sense, take the entire, this coming year and what's left over and use it towards offsetting the budget?
Yeah, possibly. You know, again, the approach that we took was to spend down the appropriation and then go into choice. And that's exactly what we're going to do.
So if we use what we planned to use, the 355, or is that the number?
Yeah, 355.
Less what, less our receipts, what we have, it, what's the difference between the 250 proposed floor and what Rodney wants us to put towards 20? So if we make your recommendation in composing our own budget, that would probably give us, we'd get closer to Rodney's number, but it's not going to be 600,000, but it might be higher than the 355 that Patty is proposing in her budget.
If we change the floor, how much school choice available to give to the town?
If we, if we change the floor...
To 250?
Yeah.
Right.
How much money is available to give to the town to offset the budget?
For 20.
For 2020.
With the projection, school choice.
No, there'd be, no, there'd be more than that.
355, 445.
5,000, 55, 100?
Yeah, 500,000.
Yeah.
So it'd be, so we'd be, to meet Rodney in the middle would leave us with 250, as you guys are recommending. And we, we wouldn't get to his number, but it would be slightly higher than what Patty proposed.
We wouldn't get to the 675, but we'd probably get to the 500.
Is it 675?
Yeah.
Oh, because of the preschool.
Now, I may have to use that, so I'm going to have to find the 75 someplace else.
Which would only come out of school choice or something.
Possibly.
Yeah.
That would be the first place you'd look. But again, I think taking the approach that the Finance Subcommittee, not Subcommittee, but Group.
Working Group, yes.
Working Group, thank you.
Got chastised about that.
The approach that we took, I think, was the, was a real good approach because we haven't, we haven't moved any choice money yet. We want to see if there's extra money in transportation or sped or any, any other places that we might be able to find it, so.
And so then the precedent we'd be setting moving forward is because the town manager can see our budget, because it is totally out in the open, if we, if we, if he knew that we wanted to maintain that ceiling, then he would realize in composing his budget that every year, I think that, you know, that that delta is available to supplement our, you know, the town appropriation.
Right.
But what I'm confused about is because it's always, at any given time, more can come in or less can come in.
We could get less than the half a million we're projecting right now because if a student moves out in January, I lose half of that.
Right.
And if, you know, if another student moves in, choice student, then you pick it up, but, you know, you can't count on that. So what would be, town manager can see, is he can see the revenue right now that's in the, the 800,000 that's in the, in the choice revolving account. And he can project just by looking at the monthly deposits that go in there, as I can, what's going to be there at the end, you know, projected at the end of the year is going to be close to 1.1 million dollars. Now, but don't forget, that's in arrears.
Right.
So the 600, if you take the 675 off of that, the following year, you've got, I'll use round figures, $400,000. So you have to have, we're going to have to have a discussion with the town manager every year. It can't, it's not, it can't be a fixed number because we may not have a half a million dollars worth of choice students next year. We may only have 400,000. So, and it, there has to be a discussion and we don't want to just use, use all of that money. That's why we came up with a floor. Now, he might not agree with that floor, but it's, that's the start of the discussion as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not, we're not...
I mean, we tried to be smart and talk about it and find a number that made sense, but it, you know, that may not be the right number at the end of the day.
Right. Right. He might say, well, this, you know, and I, and you know, back, back when we got 0.14 and I, you know, I hate bringing that up, but I, I made it very clear to the people at that meeting that day that we were going to hit a wall coming down the road. Well, this is the wall. As we move forward, it, it tends to look a lot better as far as percentages go before you even touch the, the school choice money. We're just starting on the FY 21 budget, you know, well, we want, you know, the reason why I'm doing this so that the school committee can have a lot of input into this budget. And I'm, I'm just saying that it looks a lot better than it, than it did do in the 20 budget. You're going to see some big changes. You're going to see, you know, especially where we did get some of, you know, that, I look at, you know, I don't want to be a bad guy here, but I look at what the CIP gave us. If I had just gotten the choice money, I might have been better off. And they funded the budget.
Well, I mean, I think you point out something that I, that's been rattling around in my mind since we got that CIP funds, is that you can't, the town can't on one hand say, "Apply for these CIP funds, okay, and then reduce your budget by this much or we're going to give you this much less." Because half those things weren't in our operating budget because we're supposed to be in a level service.
Oh, yeah, right.
You know, so it's not, I just, I find that a bit disingenuous to say, "Oh, well, we, don't forget, we gave you the CIP money." It's like, well, that wasn't even on our to-do list. We're grateful that DPW is going to maintain our facilities for us, but that was kind of expected. So I just want to circle back to what you said about the 1.1 million projection. He does, he does remember though, that we have not touched the choice funds yet for this year.
Right, that's what he sees.
So, but will he, he doesn't, does he realize that there's another 350 that's coming out of there for this year's operating budget?
Right, right. But don't, okay, so the 350 comes out.
Right.
That leaves, round figures, $700,000. He's going to take 675, basically leave. We figured it out, it came up, when we figured all of the numbers all the way down, I had them written, I should have brought them with me, that we were going to have around 97,000.
97,000 or something like that.
Ah, I see.
So that would be, after all the dust, if we use every, you know, this plus the 350, but I, you know, I'm hoping I don't have to use the 350. I'm hoping that, you know, I'll pick up some money there.
And that's where it gets wonky.
That's where it gets...
Because, and that's where it gets wonky and that's why I think that, you know, I think that the, my line in the sand is the, is the floor.
Right.
Because if we don't lose, use the 355, next year, when we go around the same adjudication, now maybe we have 1.3 million sitting in school choice. And now we're talking about how much of that, I'm just throwing a number out there.
Yeah, I know that.
This is not mathematically correct.
I don't think it will. I think it's going to come down to like a half a million. When we, by the time we use the 355 and we use, if we have to use 675...
And I'm assuming we're not using any, we, I'm just saying, we in the school, we in the budget with only appropriation. We use a small amount of the school choice.
Oh, yeah, that's the difference.
We turn around the next year, we're going to have to readicate this because now it may not be 600, maybe 700,000 dollars that we, we can actually give because we're sticking with our important thing, which is the flexibility of having the floor.
Right. And that's why I say you have to have a conversation with the town manager every single year because it can...
And we have to have a conversation with, and again, why I think the floor is so important, so we don't have to continue to go through this, this, this drill of the money you're seeing is, half of that's already encumbered.
Right.
You know, it's not half, but I mean, a good chunk of it's already encumbered, you know.
Right.
A lot of fun.
Yes, it is. I move that we close the public hearing.
I've got a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I can, my Jeff. Scotty? Nicole?
Yes.
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 Oh, yes.
All right. We're closing the public hearing at 5:51. And we'll move on to the next item of the agenda, which is public comment, and we still do not have any public, so we don't have any public comment. Next item, we have the representative from the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, Nancy Mills.
Hello.
It's, it's on for the TV.
It's on for the...
It's on? Yeah. Thank you. I think this is probably a little lighter than the discussion I just heard.
Well, thank you for being here for us.
Yes, thank you for having us again. I'd just like to make the announcement is that during the February break, we're going to have a four-day winter camp for children ages or grades one through six. And it's limited to 25 students, so I'm going to go ahead and leave this with you and however you might publicize that, feel free to do so, so it will be the first 25. I think we have two students already that have called and enrolled. The second item I have is that we are going to send out formal invitations to the school committee and to the school principals and superintendents to, you're invited to our education open house on January 25th. It's from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. We will have all of our educational services and programs at little kiosks. We'll do an exit service, survey of our parents. We will have dinner. The drum will be there. We'll do an honoring ceremony of somebody that many of you are familiar with. We'll have childcare and we'll also have raffles. And we would be very honored if any and all of you could attend. So we'll send those formal invitations probably within the next week. And I'll leave that with you as well. And I would just like to say, I actually was invited to a district leadership meeting by the superintendent and I and a colleague, an elder from the elders judicial committee of the tribe, spent probably an hour discussing attendance issues and truancy. And it was very, very pleasant and very productive. And I just want to thank the administration and leadership team for, for that, kicking that off. It's very valuable. And thank you for having me here tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Yeah, so Roxanne, if you leave that with Kathy, then we can make sure I get that in.
Yeah. All right, we'll move on. The next item is the approval of minutes from December 12th.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, George. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. Does anybody have any discussion or comments on the minutes? Hearing none. Nicole, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. All right, minutes have been approved. Next is the report of the superintendent, Mr. Boe.
So in your packet, you have the report of Principal LaBelle from the Coombe School, 403 students. This, the enrollment is as of December 18th. That's always a little bit odd because everybody sort of has a different date. Some of his acknowledgements, I want to do a shout out to Brian Montgomery. He is the halftime music teacher at the Coombe School. They did a fabulous grade one music concert, a winter concert before the break. And then in one of his highlights, Principal LaBelle is talking about their WIN groups and the work that they have done with Carrie Thurston, who is a consultant, a very experienced, knowledgeable person about how to help our kids become better readers. And so he describes some of those experiences. What I wanted to point out particularly is the work of Carrie Thurston and also to acknowledge Hope Hanscom for bringing the model to Mashpee and the hard work of the reading specialist Jennifer Kenny and the ELA curriculum team at the Coombe School for helping to navigate the initiative. And then he talks about expected and unexpected outcomes from the WIN program and this, the work that the teachers are doing and they're doing a great job. Though we expected to see growth with the new model, we were not prepared to see it so quickly. This year's Cycle 1 data shows that 80 to 86% of each grade level experienced typical or accelerated growth. Systematic use and analysis of reading data is one of the results. Grade levels are becoming familiar with students other than their own, so it gives you a better feel for we're responsible for all students. High growth expectations for all students, not just those who are struggling in the reading area or literacy. Increased collaboration of the special ed classroom teachers, specialists and paraprofessionals. Everybody is involved with the WIN teams. Creating engagement opportunities for students with multiple staff members. Students are enjoying the novelty of visiting other classrooms. And increased attention span, hand-eye coordination, memory and visual tracking, which are all some of the skills worked on in those, in that program. Principal LaBelle, would you like to add anything?
You know, I think my bullet summing up is...
If you've got anything to say, please come to me.
I really don't.
Okay.
It's a great program, I can, whatever, sum it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone questions on his report?
No.
And you have the report of Mary Kate O'Brien, Principal of Quashnet School, 502 students there as well. And we talked about this at our December 12th meeting, but the Quashnet School evacuation due to the natural gas leak and the presence of carbon monoxide, Principal O'Brien would like to acknowledge the support of the administrative team, the teachers, the staff, the Mashpee Fire Department, the Sandwich Fire Department, the Kootuat Fire Department, Mashpee Police, DPW National Grid, the Boys and Girls Club staff, the Mashpee Recreation staff, the Cape Cod Collaborative and Drivers, the Mashpee Public School Lunch Staff, our families, for the, the support that they provided for our students. The students were very safe, but they were in a calm environment. And so I think that that was sort of something absorbed by the students. And we're still waiting to hear from the Department of Education as to whether that, the Thursday in particular, I think that was the 12th, 13th, is, will be waived. I doubt it. It doesn't go by just hours. When it comes to hours, we have more than enough hours at the elementary level and I kind of laid that all out, but it's hours plus days. And because we have five potential snow days built into the calendar and have not used them yet, they're not likely to give us a waiver.[1776.62] So what we were probably leaning towards, we haven't decided that, and I haven't heard back yet from Desi, they, I did hear back, but then she was having a meeting with the commissioner, was, on the professional day in March, it may be a half-day for students at the Quashnet School. That's the way they make up that day, teachers are already working that day, and then the day, the Thursday day making it up for teachers will come at the end of the year, but kids will not have to go an extra day, potentially, but we don't know for sure. We, we should know by the next meeting, because we wanna make sure families know. And then also, in Principal Brian's report, she wants to acknowledge the awards that her teachers received from Cape Cod Five Cent Savings Bank, they have a mini-grant program, and 105 teachers from 44 schools were selected from Cape Cod, and if you see the list down there, uh, comes to $3,400 worth of grants that the teachers wrote and were granted, and there is an award ceremony on the 16th of January at Cape Cod Community College that they will be attending, so, um, just a shout out to Carrie Pons, Jamie Whitten, Sean O'Connor, Greta McHugh, Elizabeth Babich, Chris Hill, Elena Boyd, Emily Pimentel, Colleen Blunt, Jessica Blackwell, and Lucinda McKay for, um, taking that initiative on. And then the one last thing I wanna share from the report is, there's a letter on the page two of her report from National Grid, but at the bottom, it was, after sharing the dates for the Quashnet Steam Night, which is February 28th, and then the annual Quashnet School Career Day, which was, which is May 24th, National Grid has confirmed they will participate with gas safety presentations for both events. And so it's really, um, a nice community connection, a nice outreach, sort of a partnership that was acquired in not the most pleasant of situations, but it will be, it will be good nonetheless. Would you like to add anything?
Just want to clarify, on that letter from National Grid, it was addressed to me, but I do have to give credit to the front office staff for quickly responding to that gas and odor. It was, me personally, it was that front office staff, and I'm grateful to them, and I think it'll be great to have National Grid here, and to help our family and students.
And I was pleased to see the offending boiler has been removed from the premises.
Yes, it has.
Yeah.
It's completely gone, every bit of it was removed over vacation.
Yeah.
So, and the cap on the bench is completely done and sealed and finished, which is terrific.
Yeah, that's great, I'm glad they took care of that so quickly. Thank you, DPW.
Yes. Next up is the report of Principal Balistrachi, Mashpee Middle High School, 719 students. A shout out to the Mashpee Men's Club, they hosted our High Five Student Luncheon in December. Thank you to Lynn Weeks, the librarian, and her tech experts, they have held several technology help sessions for the community, I believe there's one coming up. Thank you to Kristin Deschamp and Aphrodite Purdy for escorting students to the GSA Leadership Council Meeting. Thank you to Andy Tryanos and Lysel Keller, and the band and chorus members who visited Laurentide, and also they visited, um, our schools. And also to Kristin Deschamp and Aphrodite Purdy and the art hosts of students, they visited the Royal Kootuat Nursing Home to spread holiday cheer. And a thank you to Sarah McNamara, she's a senior, for spearheading the second annual backpack drive for Cape Cod homeless population. And, um, just a quick letter that I actually received from the Royal Kootuat Nursing, I'm gonna quickly read it. Dear Superintendent, we are sending praises to your two teachers, Effie Purdy and Kristin Deschamp, for once again reaching out to the Royal Kootuat Nursing and Rehab Center and providing excellent intergenerational programs to our community, every time they come, it is magical for our residents and your students. Recently, their visit involved making holiday cards and singing, we congregate in our main dining room, and the chatter among the participants is so uplifting, and the benefits are immense. I'm hoping you will support these types of interactions and programs. The teachers and students were hoping to visit again around Valentine's Day. A few of your students involved in the chorus and drama departments discovered we are celebrating the World of Disney in May, and expressed great interest in coming back that month with a special Disney presentation. The ideas for positive interactions are endless. And I did write back to these, they're exactly the kind of interactions we want with our students. I'm gonna post on Facebook, she sent some pictures that are adorable of some of the elderly residents of that community, and, um, just being engaged with our students, and it just kinda breaks your heart, because they're, they remind you of your own family members, and they're there, so, but things like this, we need to get more and more of them, but we're grateful for that. And then we have the, um, report of Dr. Curley, 273 students are currently, um, have an IEP. Any questions on, anything on her report? It's a little different than the last reports, we've decided to sort of consolidate the other, where we used to list those out individually, sometimes it's not really great to have such low numbers in a category on a report, so, that's the only difference if it looks different from previous.
This reminds me why we need to keep that floor.
Yeah.
You know, we were just, we were just up at 20 a year ago, and now we're at 18, and we could just as easily be back up at 20 in no time, so.
And I think we did bring that up when we were in the finance working group. Yeah, the report of the, of the athletic director, I know tonight is our first home varsity boys' basketball game, I don't know why it was scheduled on a conflicting night with this meeting, but, and the girls are off to a really strong start, the girls' varsity basketball, I think they might be eight and one, something like that, they did just have a loss, but they are doing a really great job. Justin Clark is the new varsity boys' basketball coach, Brian DeRoche is the middle school coach, Mark Doucette, he's back, he's been, um, winter track coach before. Then you have the personnel report, we have Lynn Harris, our part-time outreach coordinator, her last day was December 14th, I think, she resigned, but luckily we have found Christina Ball, and she came on board probably today, and she is a Mashpee resident and a Mashpee graduate, and, um, will be a good fit till we get to our July 1st point, and then hopefully whatever choice she might make. And then also, under departures under the Quashnet School, Andrea Fulham was the grade three teacher, and she resigned, a grade-three special ed teacher.
You just mentioned that, so if we, we have a full-time position funded in our FY20 budget, assuming we do that, um, this position, she doesn't automatically become full-time?
No, we'll post it.
We would have to repost and...
She knows that.
Okay, all right.
Yep. Okay. And we currently have a long-term sub-in for that grade-three special ed teacher. So total enrollment is 1624, um, where that arrow was, but, and, any questions on any of that so far? Okay, so then the next sheet in your, um, packet is the chronic absentee information, I wanted, we wanted to start including this data, um, so you can see for Quashnet School, this is as of December 20th, which was the 72nd day of school. If you are chronically absent, you would be someone who would miss basically 7.2 days at that point, and so based on that information through Power School, this is the information shown below for each of the schools. The reason that we want to track this, because now it's part of the, uh, an indicator and accountability, but the high school last year, and we still are diving into this data, had a chronic absenteeism rate of 24.9, which I do think is flawed, whether it's in our system or the, the feeding of data to Desi, something is wrong with that number, but if, just for perspective-wise, you know, we're currently at 17.5% at the high school in last year, for 18, 2018, it was 24.9. So on a monthly basis, at least, we can see if it's creeping up, or if there are certain months that is, are the heavy hitter months, more so than others, but we do have to figure out ways to, um, improve attendance.
Can I ask a question? So, what's, I mean, it's interesting to me that the number, the percentages at Coombs are similar to that of the high school, that there's, that the heaviness is sort of on the early years and on the high school, but also, um, what's the number, and don't say zero, because I know that we want perfect attendance all the time, but what is the number to strive for? I mean, are the, the schools that are awesome at this at 5%? Or are they, are they at 12? Or are they somewhere in between that, like?
I don't think anybody was at 5. I did remember looking at some of it, because it made me wanna look at all the other Cape schools, and not necessarily just the Cape schools. I think a reasonable list would be in the 10 to 15 range, 15 being on the high, I'd love to be closer to the 10%, that's just me personally, I don't know how the other people feel.
Okay. Because there are some that are really, not, that others aren't valid, but if you have a long-term illness, like, there are kids who are going to be chronically absent for very significant legitimate reasons, um, and that's just, that's typical, but that plays into the, the kids who are getting to 17% are not typically long-range illnesses.
So is it, if I'm understanding this percentage correctly, so would be, anything in the course of a total year, 18 days plus is considered chronic?
But they start counting at 20 days of enrollment, so at that point?
Yep.
Two.
It's two.
Yes. But by the time you get to the end of the, providing their students hear the entire year, yes.
Why, hope, are you taking issue with Desi's methodology?
I struggle. I do believe that it's important that kids are in school, I think, clearly I believe it's important, but, um, I don't think this necessarily measures it, uh, this doesn't tell the whole story, and that's where I struggle.
Mm-hmm.
But, no one really cares about me.
I know we talked about this, and I apologize if I may, just reiterate, so when did they start counting?
When a student has been with us for 20 consecutive days, enrolled for 20 consecutive days.
And this is, you know, this is like 1.9 days on average per month.
Yes. Okay, I didn't do the math.
I'm saying, in the grand scheme of things, it's, you know, that's a small amount of absenteeism if you're, if you're sick.
It doesn't feel like a lot when you're a family, for sure, you know?
Interesting.
Especially when we have rules like, you can't come back to school if you have a fever within 24 hours.
Right, which we want people to abide by.
Absolutely, yes. So, I mean, that kinda conflicts with what, yeah.
And there, what Desi says just again and again is, this isn't a judgment, it's data, and the data says if they're not in front of, at learning, if they're not in front of a teacher, they're not accessing school, and that's what we're actually measuring, but it's not, I mean, that's a very cut and dried way of looking at a much more political issue than that, so.
Yep.
Sorry, I didn't mean to go off on.
And it's only weighted 10% in the formula, which, so it's not huge, but it's a little decent. And maybe down the road, they'll change, they'll, they'll see that it was not, I, I think it must have a goal of improving attendance, or, or making sure we pay attention to attendance. I don't know if they're gonna find out in the end that produces the result they're looking for.
So what are strategies that you employ to reduce absenteeism?
Well, there's, the elementary level, there's, there's quite a few things we've been reading about, but sometimes it has more to do with the personal connection, so it's not an automate, unautomated call that says your child's registered, is absent, it's not necessarily even the person sitting at the front desk. It seems to make a difference if it's the teacher who calls, or if it's the principal who calls, but you have to have a positive relationship with families. I know Mary Kate shared a story of having a conversation with a parent as they dropped off their child, this child tended to be tardy, and just through sort of a clarification of, you know, you're supposed to be in your seat at 8:15, not walking in the door, and you can get your breakfast and do all that, it seemed to fix it. So there's, you almost have to go individually and really find out what's going on. I know when we met with, um, Roxanne, and we talked about attendance, the elder that was with her, what was her first name? Anyway, was emphasizing that in the Wampanoag tribe, time is not, does not have the same meaning as it does in our culture, and so it's just, so culturally, there are a lot of reasons kids are tardy or might be absent, that we have to take into account and figure out how we can better work with them. So that, that's gonna be a great little partnership with the plans to help.
And I saw that there was an article in the Enterprise, was that something that was, um, you put them on that, or they were just reporting what you said at the last meeting?
Is that an online article that's in there today?
Well, it is, because I just found it.
So it's gonna be in Friday's paper, I suppose?
It was not something we approached them about.
Well, the reason I mention it is because it would seem, as a parent, I think it's, it's important to communicate, you know, why this is important, and, you know, it, it's not like there's a renewed interest in absenteeism from the school perspective, you got, they're always concerned about, you know, kids being absent, but, um, like, my husband and I were talking about it before the meeting, and he was like, yeah, I thought absentee's, absence always counted, because it's part of the formula, like how many kids you have in school, your enrollment dictates what you get from the state. And I said, yeah, but now it's being included in our, in sort of how our school, or what our, whether we're meeting our targets or not. But, I mean, I'm a nerd, so I care about that, but to the parent, then what do you say after that? So, so what? What does that mean?
Well, I would want parents to understand, it's regardless of whether Big Brother is looking over our shoulder and saying, oh, you know, your attendance, all of the research shows the importance, particularly at the Coombs and the Quashnet School, of students being in front of that teacher when they're sort of getting those foundational skills in place, that it's hard to replace a highly skilled teacher, and being there makes a difference. So it's, it's more like, on a personal level, what you, what we want for each child sitting before us, not whether, you know, Desi is telling us, and that, we've tried to give that message continually.
Let me just add something too, because the data also shows, like we talked about last month, that if you have, if, if you're absent more than, chronically, more than 10%, you're 66% likely to graduate in four years from high school, but if you're not chronically absent, you're 95% more likely. It doesn't matter, socioeconomic status doesn't matter, none of, you know, just controlling for all of those other factors, just absenteeism. That's a huge, huge difference, and it's logical, but when we don't think about Mr. LaBelle's school in the same way we do Mr. Balistrachi's, even though the numbers are low, and this, I don't mean to say that, but it matters, it really, really matters at all three buildings, including Mrs. O'Brien, because now I'm getting stink eye from her. But as Mrs. DeBor said, those foundational skills, we can't make that up, so if you've missed, if you've been chronically absent in third grade, then you're, it's, it's like exponential how much you have to catch up when you move along, because you're missing the foundation, so, sorry, it is a little soapboxy.
I think we forget sometimes too, as, as parents, and sitting behind this table, and, and the years go by, and we're removed from school, how it felt to walk into a school late, or miss a day or two, and then come in, and, I mean, you, you essentially, you're there, but you're essentially missing hours, or maybe another day, because you just feel out of place, you don't feel right, you're trying to catch up. So I think that's, you know, something that needs to be explained, and, you know, unless you're that student, you may forget about that, because I know at least me, I graduated a while ago, you kinda, you know, lose that sense and forget about how it feels, you know, so do the students themselves, it's, it's pretty important.
I'm just wondering if maybe parents, uh, parents might have ideas about how to reduce absenteeism. I've heard a lot of parents say to me how, how they struggle to pay for vacations during our two breaks that everybody in New England takes, because the, it's so expensive to travel then, so they tend to travel off break, because it's the only time they can afford to go on vacation, so.
Summer is nice.
Yeah. Well, also.
Unless you're going south.
Yeah.
Nobody's going to Florida in the summer.
Stand Cape Cod.
Was there anybody else having any?
Do we have any idea what, you, you mentioned last year's, but you, that was Desi data that you were referring to, do we know our own numbers from last year? Do you have something to compare these to?
We didn't track this like this last year, we were just starting this year, based on the fact that now, um, last year, if you, if you go on the Desi website, they show absenteeism going back at least to 17, because that's where I was then, today, um, so they have their version of collecting it.
But we would have these data, we just have to.
Power Schools should make this, make this report, right?
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could, yeah, she could do that last year, that would probably be a good thing to compare it, to see if it's closer off from Desi.
Yeah, well, you'd know what it is against Desi's numbers, you might uncover the source of, of issue that you, you think exists with the high school, but more importantly, it would be good to know whether we're currently going up or down, and, and whether, I, I mean, I personally would be interested in knowing whether that's a, whether there are trends in absenteeism, or whether it's erratic, I mean, you hear people say, oh, this was a really bad flu season in any given year, and, I mean, personally, I've never heard of my kids' teachers being out as much this soon in the year as they have been, I've heard of so many people being sick, uh, so far this year, so I'm just, it's like...
We have a nice, tight building now.
Damn air quality.
Germs can't escape anymore.
So anyway, I think it's always useful, if we, I mean, maybe we could see how far back we can generate our own numbers, um...
I would be interested to see if it, if it coincides with recession.
Right, there's all kinds of things that would be interesting to correlate with.
Me and Jeff will.
Yeah, we're all geeking out over here.
Your dissertation's to have.
Yeah, exactly, it's awesome.
Thank you for that, Patty.
Okay. And then the other thing I wanted to share out is we did meet to debrief with the town manager, assistant town manager, police chief, fire chief, facilities director, and facility supervisor. And the administration met on the Friday, it would have been the fourteenth, I believe.
No, that's right. Yeah, yeah.
And just some of the things, and then we also met the following Friday with just the elementary principals, myself and Mary Bradbury from the rec department, because she wasn't able to come the first one. But just some of the things, in no particular order, I don't think you have this in front of you. Everybody, every administrator or that needs a bullhorn. We need to make sure that there's one of those at every school. We need to make sure that all administrators have the school messenger app on the phone with predetermined lists, because you can only access the lists you've built. And then, and a list of just them for testing purposes. And then making sure that the administrators' cell phones are what's in Power School, which is fed to school messengers, so that they are getting messages on what, on their device that they have right in front of them. We need a better plan for kids who are school choice kids, who don't necessarily ride home on a bus. And so that was a little bit problematic. Some of our school choice kids do ride a bus to a certain place, but that was a little bit of a gap. Making sure we always send a phone as well as email message. Mary-Kate, I know, is emphasizing this at her school, where kids need to know their addresses, phone numbers, and bus numbers. Parents need to be aware of their child's bus number. We, whenever we have an incident at a school from here on out, we're going to have a police officer posted at the entryway of the driveway in to control who comes in and out. We did have a situation here where a multi-building staff member arrived in the front, used her fob to go into the fifth grade door. No one's there. But it could have been a pretty nasty situation, particularly if there was, you know, a lot of gas in the building, or however it went. And so that would have been the opportunity, first thing, to have, to keep people out that shouldn't be there.
Can't lock those fobs down in a situation like that?
Brad can lock the fobs and lock the doors as well, but I think the bigger thing was, and then sometimes, you know, in today's immediate world of communication, sometimes it's not, we don't want parents on the site. So we need somebody to help sort of regulate the distance, as well as the news media, because they're not allowed on a school campus, and they were able to get on. And there was, I guess, people that didn't realize that. A need for extra walkie-talkies, but Mary-Kate, through her connection with the Barnstable County Sheriff's Department, they are getting us like twelve, or donating about twelve of them. Pretty high-quality, nice ones that will be able to connect directly to police. We'll have some in our office, each main office will have them. So it'll be a much better way of more instantaneous communication. The to-go bags that we have in every room, the red bags that teachers carry. One thing we wanted to add is instead of just a list of homeroom students, it should be a list of the whole school. And then each of the bags should have a legal pad for sign-out. So there was just a way to have further information out there. We don't have food in those bags, but the potential of adding something like a granola bar or something that by the end of the year, if it's not used, kids eat them, and then you get a new, because right now, it's not, not in there. And it happened to be a lunchtime, so. In terms of meeting with Mary Bradbury, a person has been assigned from each school's main office to connect with Mary Bradbury early in an emergency situation. And she knows who those people are, and we know who they are. Once the day has passed into the start of the student's school day, any rec before-school childcare responsibility shift to the school. So there was some confusion over that, and the understanding is if we've hit the start of a school day, they're ours. They're not rec department kids anymore. Mary Bradbury does get our emails, but we're making sure everything is correct in our system. So she gets all of our calls. Heidi McLaughlin would be the backup. And so that was our debriefing with her. But generally, I think that was pretty much it. We have a lot of notes, but those were sort of overall observations that we had. We were very grateful for the work of the fire department. It's a great partnership. They just have a great way with kids and adults as well. And then the fire department, I mean, the police department's very supportive, so hopefully we won't have that again, but...
That was good information. A lot of great recommendations to look at.
Is it true that there's a detector now in that room?
So there are carbon monoxide detectors in all, supposedly all town buildings. Definitely not, not probably right in that room, because they said it would go off all the time, because of the machinery that's there. But it's nearby, out, just outside of the...
We have four here in this building, and one actually is in the boiler room. But it's at the far end of that room. There's one in the hallway, the meeting hall. So right outside of the boiler room, one outside the gym door, and one in the kitchen.
Okay. I mean, I didn't want to be a pain in the butt at the last meeting, but, you know, my recommendation is if we're going to put something in the boiler room, I understand about the puffing and everything. But there's monitors that only go off when it's above a, you know, lower, the dangerous limit. So we get a monitor that goes off when it's above the lower dangerous limit than here.
So, and I believe they've been put in the other schools near the machinery areas. That's what I was told.
Because if that goes off, something's not right.
Absolutely. No, I'm thrilled to have them, and they were put in there very, very quickly. And not only was the problematic boiler room, but the hot water boiler also has a new cap on it as well as it used to have an air flap. So that's been caved in, and so that's been upgraded as well. It was very quick action by the town manager and DPW to get that rectified.
Patty, I have one question. Have you, did you guys discuss a possible reunification drill? Or some, some exercise that allows us to handle, address that transportation piece? I understand that other school districts practice this. I mean, we have our Alice train, and we do sort of shelter-in-place stuff. And, but we, to my knowledge, have never had a reunification drill in this district. And it seemed that parents were the most upset about that piece of it. You know, the communication piece and, and sort of the understanding where they're supposed to be, where the kids are supposed to be. And I feel like you guys definitely, as I said before, should be commended that not a single kid, you know, everybody walked away from this healthy, and that nobody was lost or misplaced. But I think parents would appreciate maybe developing a more solid understanding of what they can expect in those situations, should they ever arise again.
I think from my perspective, one of the pieces, though, is an over-anxious parent. The direction was, all the kids are going home on the bus, meet them at their bus stop. And if they, and we're not going to leave them there, and then they're coming back to the high school. But parents were impatient with that process. And so some came to the high school. I just saw my kid's bus leaving, and instead of just sort of following that initial directive, so it caused a lot of angst, I think, for...
Trusting the school.
Parents.
Well, trusting the...
Well, try, like...
But how, how did they know that a parent was home?
Because the teachers rode the buses, and they didn't...
Not the first day? I mean, during the first, so you, so you're, maybe you're normally home on a Wednesday, but on that particular day, they said your kids are coming home on the bus, and the bus driver always dropped the kids off. And so that day, the kid got off the bus, and nobody was there. I mean, it's, it's not about...
The bus drivers were given that direction of not letting anyone off if there wasn't a parent there, if they did.
Yeah, but some, something happened. So I don't think it's, it's not necessarily, I wouldn't write it off as impatient parents. I think a couple of things, I think I mentioned when we were going over the school handbooks, how problematic a cellphone policy is, because we don't allow kids to have their cellphones on them because it interferes with learning. And yet, when I talked to my kids about what happened that day, it was like, most people were crying because they couldn't get their cellphones. And their parents were reasonably upset, because they couldn't get ahold of their kids and just simply find out where they were. We've become reliant on that technology. So I think there's a couple of things that I wouldn't just dismiss as patient, you know, as impatience, or I think we can do a little bit better. And I think other schools have figured out ways to hold drills and to allow parents to understand and expect, because I thought it was a good adjustment to say, okay, the second day, the teachers are going to ride buses, so we know no kids are going to get off. But we're a pretty small place. We ought to be able to manage this, I think, well.
Well, we can practice different scenarios. The scenario of a true sort of leaving, say, this site and the reunification site, which is over at the Boys and Girls Club, and controlling that flow of parents in and out of there. And, right, you know, it's, there's going to be a heightened level of stress in the situation. So we, you know, I know some districts that have actually practiced busing kids to a reunification site, I think Falmouth several years back did it.
Just a suggestion, I think it might, I think it would be helpful to us. And because we're such a small, tight-knit community, I think we would, you'd do that. And then I think it would just kind of reassure everyone that we kind of know what we're doing.
Well, I do think we know what we're doing, but...
Yeah. Some people may not agree with you, Patty.
I'm sure they don't.
But I'm just saying.
Anything else on that section?
Anybody else having anything? No? All right.
Is that it for your report?
That's the next section, yes.
I know, next would be the reported student, Representative Skylar Rempel, but I believe she is at an away game tonight, so she will not be joining us.
That's correct.
And she will be missed.
What sport?
Basketball. They're playing at Cohasset.
Oh.
This is JV.
All right, so we'll move on to the next, which would be specifically assigned unfinished business. And we have an update on the school's start time implementation planning meeting from Mrs. DeBoer.
So you have a handout that looks like this, that was pulled together. You know, and some of these papers that didn't make it into the packet, a lot of it had to do with the timing of the break, and when the packet had to get out, so my apologies to that. This is the results of both a paper and an online survey. So together, we received one hundred and forty-six separate child-specific responses, which represents one hundred and thirty-one families who currently have students in grades K to five. And there are seven hundred and seventy-three students currently enrolled in pre-K to five. Families could select more than one option and are not committed at this point. And so the results of the various combinations of choices chosen are down below on the chart. This, this data was shared with Ruth Provost, as well as Mary Bradbury, as they sort of go into their planning, and also, I think, to the, to the tribe. So you definitely have thirty students who would opt for the Boys and Girls Club. And then you have different, these are single-counted students. So some said I would do this or that, or I might do all three, one of those three, and things like that. But it does help in terms of like Mary deciding, okay, she would most likely offer a program at both, both schools. And there would be a cap, there would be a maximum at each one, but she wouldn't have to go for a relicensure based on the numbers that she would plan for.
Patty, can you explain again how you presented this? So, so thirty students said only B and G.
Yeah.
An additional sixteen said B and G or MashPrec.
That's correct.
But these are not the, they wouldn't be the same.
Not the same.
So they're all, there's no doubles.
So on the ones that, you know, responded via the online, I can see, and you can see when a particular parent did one-for-one kid, and they did their next kid. So then I could say that that was one family. So it's, nobody's in here more than once in that list of data. No child, I should say.
How long was this survey? Like, when was it put out? Like, how long did we run it? Because I see we got about twenty percent response rate.
Right. Originally, it was November twenty-eighth that the paper version went out. And then the online survey was December seventeenth.
Remember, Chris, it's not a response rate, because if you didn't need it, you didn't necessarily, oh, you, were you supposed to respond if you weren't going to use it?
Yeah, you could have said, I don't need any care.
Yeah. That is pretty bad.
Could have been the time of the year, too, but people are...
I know you deal a lot more with surveys than I do. What's a, what's considered like a good response rate?
Well, these days, twenty-five is considered stellar. But, but no, I mean, you'd like, you'd like to have it up over, you know, thirty, forty percent.
Yeah.
And usually, I mean, you would leave it open for three or four weeks. You'd assume after three weeks, you're just not going to get people. But you can send different, I mean, you send out reminders and stuff like that.
That's too bad.
So does that mean that only fifteen, so we have one hundred and forty-six kids, one hundred and thirty-one families. So there's only a handful of families with more than one kid? Does that mean that responded?
Of the ones who responded, the largest multiple was a family that had three kids in that age range.
Yeah, so there's basically a handful of people with more than one kid, because everything else is a single, one-kid family.
Right. So when I talked to, not talked, but emailed with Mary Bradbury back and forth, I feel like for, for the three groups that are willing to offer before-school care, that now it needs to become more of a formalized offering with, this will be how, you know, you need to sign up so that they can start to plan. That was my recommended next step in terms of getting it to be more concrete.
Yeah, I'm curious how Ruth feels about these numbers. Is it gonna...
I haven't heard from her yet.
I mean, they're substantial in the sense that she could feel assured that people will be using the program if she offers it.
Right. And she needs to plan for that. I feel that that would be probably a highly-desired option, because it doesn't increase really a cost for a family that's already connected to the club. It's part of her annual membership.
And they don't currently provide before-school care?
No.
And then we would send the bus there that would pick up the students in the morning. It would be a bus stop.
How many spots would you need for fifty-three students, fifty-four students?
Hopefully one.
Fifty-three? Elementary, one.
Fifty-four.
One.
Oh, no, no, it's two.
Seventy-two, three to receive.
Little people, they're little people.
Little peeps.
Any other thoughts on that information?
What did you think about this when you saw it? Was it...
I was disappointed with the return. I haven't checked in the last couple of days to see if any others trickled in, because the online one is still open. I could resend the link, you know, in Friday's email to say anybody that, anybody in, you know, K to five who hasn't filled this out, maybe they could.
Can I make a suggestion, Patty? Maybe send it out separately?
Yeah.
Only because, I mean, I read, you know, we can email, but, you know, there's a lot of people that may just look at, oh, this is what's, this is what's happening.
We can resend the one that went out.
Maybe specifically put it in the subject line, "School Start Time Survey" or something, or whatever, the title of this survey. Maybe grab somebody's attention, because, you know, there are all those people that just look at the subject of your email and say, I don't really care what's going on this week in the school, and they don't look at it. So.
We can do that. And it's easy to just add those people in if they're on the chart.
Anything else on it? No? Move on to working groups?
So I think we already hit the fiscal planning working group. Would you like to add anything to that?
I don't believe so.
I'm all set. Cool?
No, so what happens next meeting? We vote, develop and vote on our budget? So how, how does Paul know what to develop?
Basically, we're going to come up with, well, obviously, now the way we have the budget set up, bottom lines. So we're going to come up with a bottom line that we're looking for, figure out what amount we want to offset with school choice, or offset with whatever else. We don't got to go line by line, all that stuff, that's Paul's job. But basically, just the bottom-line numbers, saying this is, this is what we're looking for. This is how much we're going to offset, and go from there.
But, I mean, are, are you going to construct the budget with, based on the finance working group's recommendation of a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar school choice floor?
Just so you know, that's not a recommendation. This is still Patty's budget.
Yes.
We just had a discussion about it as a group to discuss ways to try to address the... the stuff coming from the town hall. So it's still her budget, she still recommends, it still goes out the paper of her, and then we develop our budget next, next.
And also presented tonight was what the town manager wanted.
Right.
So you, so you have two. You can say town manager, you can say superintendent or something in the middle. And then we'll go back and we'll reduce it.
But you won't have anything for us to look at?
No.
But we just have to do all that real time?
Maybe what we have to look at is the superintendent's recommended budget.
Right.
Yeah, I think if you look at this packet and then the extra one that showed the impact of the town manager's suggestion, and then we can work from there.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I think we have, I think we have a meeting coming up for, oh, sorry, I, I, what about efficiency and?
No, we have nothing else on that one, so we'll move on to the.
We have not met since.
We have not been efficient.
No, on the budget.
Oh, oh.
No, we have nothing left on the budget, so we can go on to the, uh.
Okay. The efficiency effectiveness, um, working group has not met since we last had our December meeting and you reviewed the first six pages of the proposed handbook. So we will look at the next six pages and then bring that back either at the next meeting, which could be a link, you know, or the one after that, depending on what you want to fit into that next meeting because you might need to spend time on the budget, so.
Can you clarify what the outcome is for that? What, what the expectations are for us? I mean, I saw the first six pages, are they, are you expecting me to respond?
If you have thoughts about the first six pages, you can share.
Is that shared with us or am I just emailing?
Is what, shared?
The six pages.
You got it.
Are you commenting? No, it's hard copy. I'm just trying to figure how, how, what's your expectation or how are you responding?
You can give them to.
Is it email?
Wasn't it Google?
No, it was hard copy. I can share the first six pages electronically with everybody?
I don't care either way, I just want to know how you want me to do it.
Just send me in your thoughts.
Got it. Easy.
Okay, and then, um, the stakeholder communication group, you do have, this was another handout here, this paper that looks like this. We're trying to develop questions to add to the, the family opinion survey, which we were hoping to get out at least, I'm thinking by the end of January. So these are just draft for you all to look at. We have not looked at these as in the working group yet. I think we meet next week. But timing-wise, I wanted to, um, have you time to digest. And talking about tonight, maybe there's a desire to put a few questions about attendance on there, about getting parents' input about how they feel about attendance. But anyway, I'm wondering whether you want the top two questions or something like that, getting some parent input about when students start back, whether it's before Labor Day or after Labor Day. I know in the proposed FY '20 calendar, we have them coming back after Labor Day, but maybe that's not, that's just a suggestion, it doesn't have to be that way. So whether you want to collect any information on that or no. Then the next section were some ideas on social-emotional learning. And then the last one, which I'm not saying we would use all these questions, I do like the first four under homework, but maybe getting some information on how families feel about homework and the value of it might be a good one to, another area to look into.
I'm interested in that one.
Um, no, that's, well, we have time to look, what's our target?
So Wednesday, our meeting is the?
The seventh.
The seventh.
It is?
Wait, Outreach Committee meets the seventh?
I have Outreach Working Group, January 7th, confirmed on December 14th. I, Gail wrote that at 10:00 AM.
Okay, I'll put it in my calendar.
I'll be in New York City.
Oh, no.
Yeah, for some reason I don't have that, I remember that email back and forth from Gail, I just don't have it in my calendar for some reason.
She can.
Are we meeting, is the finance working group meeting on the 9th?
Yep.
Or did I write that wrong?
I have that from 1:00 to 2:00.
I wrote that as Outreach meeting. So clearly, I'm great at doing a calendar.
But what you could do is look at these as well and you can look at, George.
Get out of here with that paper thing.
You could contribute any thoughts you had to questions and we can then, as the working group, can look at them too.
I'll talk to you after, after we adjourn with some other stuff.
So should I keep that on my calendar then?
The 7th?
Yeah.
I have it at 10:00. Anyway, we need to decide about when you want the, the family survey to go out, which I was hoping for the end of January would be for the end. So we kind of need to.
You were hoping that the end of January would be what?
I would like to send the family opinion survey out to everyone the end of January.
Okay, so we can talk about that on Monday? Okay, so then any, I, I, I don't, I think it's a good idea, if you want feedback on the start date, I'm sure you'll get some. And, but I would add in the impact to the end date. So presumably, if we're starting school earlier, then we're ending earlier. So you might want to include those as parts of those questions.
And I don't see any harm in adding them, but something tells me you're gonna get pretty much split. It's gonna be like 50/50. So I don't think you're really gonna get much information out of it.
Can you find some lottery tickets tonight, Chris, on your way home?
Yeah. That's what, that's gonna be, that's gonna be my guess, we'll see.
So if you have any thoughts on these, just send them to me. And the working group will look at them on the 7th.
Patty focuses the discussion.
Okay.
I like lottery tickets. Anyway. Or is that it on there?
Yeah, I think you're at Subcommittee Liaison.
Does anybody have any reports? On any subcommittees?
Yes. A question, actually. There's a policy that was put out by the Wellness Committee and I'm not sure where that stands. Has it gone through?
We have a Policy Committee meeting. It was canceled and then rescheduled, so we have it on the 9th.
That's fine, so.
Just to review that.
Okay, and then that needs to get on the agenda.
Yes. Yeah, because it was on there, we reviewed it last meeting, I believe it was, yeah. And then we kind of decided to leave it on the Policy Subcommittee, so.
Yes, I got it. No, I was asked that today at the Wellness Committee. The other thing that came up at the Wellness Committee was about a one-hour discussion on the turf or the athletic fields. Several good questions asked, there's already been questions and comments given to the nurses by several parents as to their concerns or approval, what have you. There is a whole mess of stuff that we are going to read and make up some sort of a recommendation of what we would like at even the next meeting, the meeting after that.
Can I ask, was the athletic director there today?
Yes, he was. And that, oh, that's about it. Is that enough? I could talk.
No, thank you, George.
Nicole? Jeff?
No.
All right, move on to the calendars.
So these are the same calendars that you saw before. I don't know that, I know it starred for a vote, I don't know that you're ready for a vote yet because I know that Mr. Myers was questioning when students were, would be returning. So I don't think we, we're not on that tight of a timeframe to get to actually vote this. I would really love to collect some input from.
I'd say it's also on the survey, right?
I know.
Yeah.
At what point would it be pretty imperative to get this approved?
In past years, we voted on it in March. Sooner is better for families, particularly when it comes down to the start of the school year and all of that, but, um.
Okay. All right, so then.
We have a little time.
We need a motion to postpone this.
I move to postpone.
What's your mind, Nicole, say anything?
If we don't give a date, then we have to bring it up as whole business the next meeting.
Do we not want, oh, that's right, we have the survey that's gonna go out, so.
I can tell you the day.
So the first meeting in February, maybe?
You want to amend it to add a date?
In March?
When's the meeting in February?
It's early.
Is it?
Yeah. The March one is March 6th. That would probably be a good.
Do you want to amend your motion?
No, I don't think we'll have any information from the survey complete by March, by, oh, not by February 6th.
No, March 6th.
Oh, okay. So is, we don't have a second meeting in February?
No, we do not.
Because of break?
Yes.
Okay.
So March 6th would be the next meeting after the.
All right, so I move to postpone this vote to the March 6th School Committee meeting. Or I can't amend my, can I just amend my motion?
You made the motion, right? Yes, you can amend it.
Work your magic, Kathy.
I'll second whatever the magic is.
Seconded by George. Any discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
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 And yes.
I do have one other thing that we're, now that we, that Nicole mentioned earlier, as long as we're going through this calendar and all the rest of that, would we, parents be interested in changing like one of the vacation weeks? A week that is less expensive to travel?
Now you're hoping for a whole nother King of George.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's an interesting point. I mean, if we're gonna ask them about the start of the school day, let's find out whether anybody's, I mean, we already have a district in Massachusetts that has looked into a March break to end school earlier because of climate change and heat in the classrooms, anticipating, you know, problems there, so.
I know in the past, we did discuss, remember, we discussed merging February and April vacation, we discussed other things that I know, what was that, three years ago, maybe? We had discussed that in the past and.
The amazing thing is it saves two days.
Doesn't save, many years ago, I was here when we did it. Part of the glitch to it was anybody's, any staff member who lives in another town, it becomes mismatched vacations.
And then we had feedback from the nurses too, saying that sending the kids out of school for February helped clean out the.
Particularly when you have a really tight.
Well, I mean, we can bring up anything you want, I'm just giving you feedback as to what happened last time we broke this up. That was the feedback.
I'll hop out a question on that.
Yeah, I think it's a good question. Is it gonna ask, why do you want to take a vacation in March or like January or?
Because both of February and April, remember, is tied to a holiday anyway. So you're really talking eight days and then versus the five in March, so it's a three-day swing.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll put one of those on there. What? Ten days.
Or make it two full weeks for Christmas and, you know, one break in March. I mean, there's like, you know.
A whole variety.
Yeah, there's a million things you could do.
But if money is the question, changing the vacation date would solve it.
Money for what?
Going on a, a school vacation week.
Well, March is spring break for the rest of the United States. So you're not gonna save any money. It's, you know, we, we compete with New England. If we do a March vacation, we're competing for, with everybody else. So it's, you know, it's six of one and a half dozen of the other, which way we go. The airlines got this down.
Yeah, they do. Yes.
We're not coming out on that.
And just related to the, um, calendar, checking with local districts around us in terms of when their kids go before or after Labor Day. Barnstable is before, Sandwich is after, Wareham is before, DY is after, and Bourne is before. And I don't think she had Falmouth on here, so.
It's, uh, what, 50/50?
Of the ones on the list.
We went to, we went before when I was growing up, so. I know, that's important, that's an important point.
I went after.
Where did you grow up?
Illinois.
Well, see, they don't have the summer tourist season there.
That's true.
No, but I grew up where we did.
It is wicked hot, though.
Oh, when did you go?
Before.
Before, oh, see.
We went after and before, both, but I grew up in the Hamptons and it's very summer-driven and we did it.
I did think it was weird, though, that we started school and then turned around and had a Friday and Monday off, though.
Ever? Or that, when you were a kid?
When I was a kid. Oh, we had to school for two days, now we have two days off. I'm like, that's so stupid. Just give me the extra two days off.
Let's see what happens. Anybody else got anything else on the count? All right. Then next, we have, uh, the new business, we have a tuition waiver for the vote on for JR in grade 12.
So JR is a, um, a senior. We don't have any school choice seats left. He's been with us for several years and he is requesting to stay through his senior year.
So moved.
Give me a second.
We have a motion by George to approve.
Patty, you didn't, you thought, once you were in school choice, you were in.
No, he's not in school choice.
Oh.
He, if we had a school choice seat, we would move him there.
So he's been here, but his parents moved.
To another town, local, but he wants to finish.
All right, so we have a motion on the table by George, seconded by Jeff. Any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
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 And yes. All right, uh, does anybody else have any, anything else to bring up?
I had three quick questions. I promise, they're super quick. I just didn't know if we had any updates for the following three items, Superintendent Board.
Oh, jeez.
The security bollards?
We did talk to Catherine Laurent. She was doing the benches. She talked about putting the benches in between the other three poles and she's getting back to us with a price. She wasn't doing the bollards.
Bollards.
Bollards. But.
So we're gonna use benches as security to stop a vehicle?
She, when we were up, we were there that day, weren't you there that day?
How big are these benches?
They're like the benches that are there now. It's just sort of a deterrent from, in that the, the posts that are there are structural, so they, she didn't feel it was.
All right, clearly, I can't picture in my head, so clearly, I think I'll check it out, so. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any, any update on the sign?
Yes, the sign. I just had an email today, I believe it's going in on the 17th of January.
I was kind of hoping I'd drive it back into town.
We should have a, we probably should have.
I saw the electrical poles, the little electrical outlets, I'm like, oh, awesome.
They're putting it in one day and then the next day coming back to do some, hooking it up. There was something with, they're waiting for some piece of steel. I don't know if there was a glitch with steel, but he's pretty certain it's the 17th. Hopefully, there'll be no snowstorms that day.
And I just, and custodian, the custodian, I was, we haven't really heard anything about our movement to get the custodians back.
No, we have not.
We haven't met with.
Followed back up on that. We've met, but not, that wasn't a topic of the.
We haven't had like our quarterly meeting.
I will not let this weather on the vine, just so you know.
I'm sure.
All right, anything else?
Okay, yes, well, so.
I got my high speed air.
Absolutely.
So you all have a book that I highly recommend that you read. It, it's very eye-opening to really what we need to do to transform our schools for the, the student of today and the future that they have. So I would hope that you would read it also for Jeff and Nicole, well, this is Jeff's, uh, there's an invite to participate in the Portrait of a Graduate that we're going to be doing, which is, and you're getting the invitation because you're on the Outreach Committee, not that you both have to do it, but whoever decides to do it has to commit to, there's three dates on this flyer that we would need you to commit to. And reading the book is something that has to be done before the first one of these meetings. So that would be awesome.
Are you gonna be home?